Okay, everything is ready to go.
It's seven o'clock by my phone.
Yeah.
Scott, you ready?
You guys.
Good evening. Welcome to the Hopkin Town Council, Town Council Meeting, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I would ask you if you have your cell phones, please put them on mute or turn off. Also like to solemn invitation, salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Councillor Davis.
Present.
Councillor Burns. Councillor Moffett.
Here.
First.
President.
All right, first up, we're going to do public comment. Somebody likes to make public comment, please step forward.
Good evening, Joe Moreau. Before I get to my, my main point, I just wanted to bring up something that's happened locally. About four years ago, I've been on an email list for the Beaver River Valley Community Association in Richmond, and they started this basically because of issues that were going on with solar. And one of the things that I recently saw in an email, there was a Superior Court case where a lawsuit was filed last December.
Joe, can I stop you there for a second? Brian, is it possible to get the?
Music.
Where is that?
Where's that coming from?
I could not get into Maryland's office.
This doesn't count towards my time, right?
Hold on a second, Joe. We'll reset the clock.
Can you play a little drum of the voice first?
She'll get the key. Click the breaker. Hold on a second, Joe. We'll reset the clock for you.
Thank you.
Trying to keep things light.
He's trying to screw me.
So in the spirit of Christmas, we've noticed.
Can somebody explain to me what happened in the Patriot Stadium yesterday? This will be the worst playoff scene in football history.
They asked him, you know, what'd you tell him at the Miller Garden office? Same thing I tell him after every loss. Every loss stinks.
On to the next, on to the next. That's one guy just kryptonite bounces off.
I mean, the guy that threw it was the, you know, the second guy that threw the interception, or whatever you want to call it, he's been in like his, his bad graces of late. So, yeah.
Mr. Moreau, would like to use, can you please?
Sure, thank you.
She's taking a minute.
Thank you, Marita. So anyway, a lawsuit was filed last December against the town of Richmond and its town council for one hundred million dollars in damages by the preserve. If you don't know where the preserve is, just drive down one thirty-eight. When you come to the drive-in theater, right after that on the right-hand side, you can't miss it, especially at night. There were three attorneys from the law firm of GSM represented the town in that case. They were retained by the town's insurance carrier. The town solicitor declined to represent the town because of the likelihood that she would be called as a witness to testify. She said, and I want to quote, and I, I'm not sure of the pronunciation of these names, Marzak, Vey, and Sipol did an exceptional job representing the town. Again, quoting, "It's very difficult to get a case like this dismissed before trial." She said, "Jim, Steve, and Pur worked extremely hard on this case, and this decision is an outstanding achievement," end quote. I just want to compliment our town solicitor, Stephen Sipol, who was, who was part of this case and helping out our neighbors. And thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome. There's been a lot of discussion about the town vehicles, and I asked David Caswell if he would send me a text when the vehicles came in. And a couple of weeks back, when the two new trucks were delivered, I went up to DPW and I saw the truck. I took pictures of the trucks and I sent them out to members of boards and commissions. I was really impressed with that. I want to thank everyone involved in the town and purchasing. I was there when Whaling City was still there getting the trucks ready for that delivery. So everyone did a really great job with that. I know David went to get the trucks registered, and the only unfortunate thing when he registered them, they wouldn't give him any antique plates because they're brand-new trucks. So we're going to save those plates for the other three vehicles. I know there's another truck that's in the process, and everybody should be complimented for the job they deal with there. My main point is upcoming tonight, under council appointments, there's a discussion, consider and possibly vote to advertise for the positions of town solicitor, zoning solicitor, planning solicitor, prosecution lawyer, and pro-aide judge. I have heard recently about comments of moving our town forward, and I agree with that. I worked in retail management my entire life, and there's always a learning curve when you hire someone new. I used to see that all the time to get people up to speed. I can only speak concerning our planning solicitor and our town solicitor. In our planning department, right now, we have four large projects between the Brushy Bruce Brook Project, Stone Ridge, Skunk Hill, and Atlantic Solar. Our town planner spoke at the last planning board meeting on December seventh, and that was at the three, three-hour, twenty-two-minute part of the meeting. And basically what she said was, "I want to lay down my cards on the table. Maggie has done a great job." And that was a comment from, from that person. In our town, we're in the middle of the opera funding allocation, and tonight we will hear about the very generous gift from the Clinton estate. Myself and others believe now is not the time to see what is out there and replace these two solicitors. I believe and others believe they have done a great job. Let's move forward and not start all over again with two more attorneys during such a critical time. The other thing I was thinking about is, if you consider, and I'm going to take my former, my Yankee buddy here, our town manager, that we want to go out there and we want to see what, what's out there for town managers. And we go out and we realize, you know what? It really isn't anybody better. Let's stick with who we have. What message does that send to Brian? You know, wow, they think that much of me that they're going out looking for somebody new and they can't replace me, so I guess they're stuck with me. What's his job performance going to be like? Now, he's the type of guy that probably wouldn't affect him, but you never know, other people, it could affect them, thinking, "I'm not good enough, and yet I've been doing this for a couple of years now. Let's not make any changes. Let's move forward. We've got more things that we can work on." You know, I, I mean, I've recently reviewed the charter commission a couple of times now, and there's so much in there that we can do in other areas in our town. I think that's what we should focus on. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have a public comment?
Good evening, folks. Al DiOrio. I also would like to just spend a couple of minutes talking about this upcoming item on the agenda, the advertising for the planning board solicitor position. I was a bit disappointed to hear that the council feels that this position should be advertised at all. I am not aware that the current solicitor's performance has been anything but exceptional.
Let me, let me stop you there, Al, real quick. It's not just.
Yes, I know. I.
It's, it's all.
I'm focused on the planning board solicit, and they need not be lumped together, so. And so, for the following reasons, I would respectfully request your consideration of Ms. Hogan's reappointment to this position. As I mentioned in my previous email to all of you, in my fifty years of working as a surveyor, I've worked very closely with the legal profession. Without hesitation, Ms. Hogan stands out as one of the best attorneys that I have ever worked with. Her experience and commitment are well-respected by her peers, and she has served both the planning board and the community in an exemplary fashion. She is, as has been pointed out just recently, she's well-acquainted with the various applications and projects that the planning board is currently reviewing them, some of which are very complicated and have significant histories. Bringing someone else on board at this late stage for any of those projects is going to be something that the planning board does not need right now. And lastly, Ms. Hogan continues to provide the planning board with current case law critical to maintaining the board's knowledge of the land use landscape. That, in my experience, no planning board solicitor has ever done that in the past, and it has proven very important to the planning board members. So for these reasons, I urge you to reappoint Ms. Hogan to the position of planning board solicitor without delay, and thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. DiOrio. Anybody else have a public comment?
Good evening, everyone. Carolyn Light, Planning Board Member, forty-three Forest Glen Drive. I'm obviously here to speak on Maggie's behalf. She didn't ask me to. But you know me, when I have something to say, I say it. In my mind, without polling the departments and the members, volunteer members about someone's performance is disappointing. Further to that disappointment is the value of time. You guys don't have any more time available than the rest of us do. Right now, I think this discussion could fall into the category as a waste of time. Further, a waste of money. As a resident, I would, I would be disappointed if you felt obligated to advertise for the position of the solicitor for the planning board. We don't have a lot of money in our community. We have a great solicitor in Ms. Hogan. Ms. Hogan has presented to the board a fashion of work that up until Maggie came, we were not aware that we could be provided such insight and such knowledge and such guidance, let alone her reputation in the state of Rhode Island. If you choose to pursue your path, I would hope that you would pursue somebody with the skill set, the experience, the knowledge that she has to offer. Other than that, I think you'd turn the planning board upside down. Who saw the game yesterday, the Patriots game? Everybody see the game? You hear about the game? This morning, I said, "If the town council decides that they're going to pursue replacing our current solicitor, it would kind of be the equivalent of what the Patriots did yesterday. Just sit down. There is no right in a decision to get rid of somebody who worked so hard on behalf of the community of Hopkinton." I have a tremendous amount of respect for her, and I can't say that I had that for our prior solicitor. And I have never been fond of my relationships with any lawyers that I've had to work with personally or professionally. Maggie really does stand out. She's a wonderful asset to our community. Letting, letting her go would just be a big mistake. I don't think we need to start your new tour off that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Slay. Anybody else for a public comment? Excellent. Okay, moving forward, acknowledgements and announcements. Attorney Danny Barudy to, how do you say glasses? Read the will of Velma Clinton. This presentation to the council is to honor the late Mrs. Clinton and its informational personal purposes only. This will be no discussion about the manner in which the town will use the gift that has been granted from Clinton estate at this time. Attorney Barudy, I'd like to do a little presentation. Councillor Bob Burns, Councillor Sharon Davis, Solicitor Sipol, myself, Bill Scotthurst, Councillor Moffett.
Mr. President, distinguished members of this council, Mr. Manager, Madam Clerk, Mr. Sipol, and to the community members joining us tonight. I'm here on behalf of the estate of Velma L. Clinton, a very longtime resident of the town of Hopkinton. I will keep my words short because she never sought out, or would she probably accept public recognition for just about anything she did. I'll say this to you. I've known, oh, I knew Mrs. Clinton for the better part of fourteen years. And there were, there are certain things she valued. Number one was animals. Number two, books. Number three, her friends and neighbors and the town of Hopkinton. She was very active, civic, and civic-minded for many years. Towards those ends, she provided for the town of Hopkinton a very substantial gift. One late-model Subaru vehicle, the contents of her home. And I'm here to present you, the town council, a check for one million, two hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-three cents with specific instructions that this town, acting through the town council, do with as the town council sees fit. That's the only limitation she put onto this gift. So, Mr. President? These folks have been, these two ladies have been in lockstep with me since the start. Probably her closest friend and neighbor.
I've been a friend of Velma.
Could you say your name for you, please?
No, my name is Lois O'Shane. I've been a friend of Velma Clinton's for quite a few years, and I probably knew her better than anybody still alive today. Denise has known her longer than I have, but I was very close. I don't know what you will do with this incredible generous donation. I know that Velma loved animals. She loved a lot of things. She loved the town of Hopkinton, but she loved animals. I know, I'm not suggesting we do whatever you want, but I know some years ago, she tried to donate some money to animal control, but you can't do that if you're a citizen. I think it's against the law or something. So if she had a few dollars left from what you want to do with it, if you put something towards animal control, I think she would, I would make her really happy. I think you would agree with me. And, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming up.
My name is Denise Kugler. I've known Velma for over fifty years. I was just a little. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I lived across the street from her and her family when they first moved out here from Michigan. I knew the whole, they came out as five with the family, and she was the remaining, you know, member of the family. She was always very dear to my whole family. She used to babysit me as a kid. And she had a kindness in her that you don't see in people these days. And she's greatly missed on our street. She was, always had a smile. She'd stop when anybody drove through, stop, big wave, smiled, everybody coming through. She had a heart of gold, and she, like she said, she loved animals. She walked miles every day, but she carried a bag of goodies for all the animals in, on the street. She gave carrots to the horses and treats for the dogs, and she would talk to anybody she saw along the way. But she's, a light is going out in our street since she's passed.
Thank you.
I'd like to close by thanking Mrs. Sipol for his help throughout the process. Captain Carrier from the Police Department is instrumental, and the town manager for, for guiding us through the process.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Barudy.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving forward. Prove the consent agenda, consent agenda.
Agenda order.
In due well. Approval of the town council minutes for December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I asked for that. We removed, please. Is there some minor corrections in there?
Well, let me get through it first and come back to it. Prove to set sub-executive set of commissions for December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Accept the following monthly activity reports. Town clerk approve refund as a result of duplication payment on realty property tax submitted by the tax collector. Approve refund and as a result of overpayment of real estate property tax submitted by tax collector. See, set February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two as the second town council meeting in February due to President holiday. Somebody want to add any motion, or is there any corrections we would like to make?
I mean, will that Joey just take? I make a mo, has the council been able to read the executive session minutes?
Yes.
I came in earlier and read them. I make a motion that the consent agenda be adopted except the town council meeting minutes of December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Motions on the floor. Do I have a second? Second on the floor. All in favor, aye? Motion pass. Okay.
The only thing I, I was concerned about is, was at the previous meeting, we made a motion, or I made the motion for Dr. Velma Clinton and somebody else. Was that the last meeting or the previous meeting? Was it? Okay. Because I was reading this and it entered my mind. So thank you, the correction.
All right.
So do they need to be polled? Is that the only correction that you had on, on those?
No, it's the only correction he had.
Okay, so did we adopt the, the minutes with that correction? Okay, so did we adopt the minutes with that correction?
Yes. Okay, motion to approve consent agenda. But I want to do some move arounds. Counselor Davis?
Yes, I'd like to move number two under unfinished business up above the town manager report.
A second? All in favor?
Davis, aye.
First, aye.
My flag?
My flag, aye. Motion passes. Yep, go ahead. Brian, do you want to let Representative Cotter and Kennedy go first?
Discuss, consider, and possibly vote on suggestions for the Rhode Island General Assembly. Discussion with Representative Brian Patrick Kennedy, Megan Cotter, and Senator Elaine Morgan. And our town solicitor gave us some information about the new land use commission, housing working group, and the zoning working group, what they wanted to work on, which I find appalling.
Yes, I'll be right quick. Reps of Cot, Representative Cotter, introduce yourself to town council, town manager.
Hello, my name is Megan Cotter. I was just elected November 8. So I am new to the whole process. I'm excited to be here. Thank you for the invitation. I actually today had a Zoom meeting, learning all about ADUs. So it actually fit really well. I didn't see this until about 4 o'clock. So excited to be here and share what I learned today.
Let me introduce. Town clerk, Marita Murray. Town manager, Brian Rosso. Of course, you know, Attorney Cyphal, the town solicitor. Counselor Bob Burns, Counselor Sharon Davis, myself. Counselors first, Counselor Moffett.
Lovely to meet you all.
Excellent, thank you.
Michael and I used to work together many months ago.
Back in the chip days.
And of course, I'm Representative Brian Patrick Kennedy, and I represent most of Hopkinton. Megan has the northern part of Hopkinton.
The sliver.
That sliver. So parts of District 38 and District 39. We did receive this. Marita was kind enough to forward this to us. As was noted, these are recommendations that were brought forth in November. So as of today, there is nothing in the form of piece of legislation. We do know Speaker Shakarchi did have an interview with the Providence Journal. And in that interview, he talked about the fact that affordable housing is going to be one of the main thrusts, once again, of this legislative session. So will this be adopted in the form of legislation? It may or may not. Earlier this evening, when I was watching the 6 o'clock news on Channel 10, the, yes, we call him the Housing Czar, who's been trying to resolve the issue of affordable housing as well as homelessness in the state of Rhode Island, said Rhode Island is in a crisis situation. Unfortunately for us, that crisis has been going on for decades. Everyone is aware of the fact that there is a requirement that each community must reach 10% affordable housing. And I'm not sure how far along Hopkinton is. At 1%, at 7%? That's excellent to hear.
Last comp plan had us higher than that, though, I think.
Was it?
Seven. I thought it was eight, eight and a half in our last comp plan, but...
So, once you reach that 10% number, things are going to be so much better because a lot of these requirements that are being forced on the local communities, at that point in time, you have much more of an ability to control what goes on in the community. I noticed that the attached article, or I guess it was preliminary draft that came from the Exeter Planning Board, that was all about what's going on in the town of Exeter. And then we had the copy of the Providence Journal news article with Speaker Shakarchi in it. But there's no question, this is going to continue to be a major focus of the next legislative session because of the fact that we're just trying to get this under control, and sooner the better. A substantial number of dollars were set aside for affordable housing this year. I believe that number was over $50 million. And we know that's just a drop in the bucket, but nevertheless, that's something that's going to be available to communities to hopefully address some of those issues. And while we have other groups that build one or two affordable units, for example, I know off of one of the dirt trails off of Clocks Falls Road, there's a couple of units that were built down there. Those help each and every community as long as they remain affordable. But once they reach the end of their deed restrictions, that's when we fall back again, where we start to lose the number of affordable units we have. So if there's any way going forward that the town can hopefully get some of these developers to try to extend the amount of time that those units remain affordable, that's a good thing for the town.
The thing I'd like to talk about is that preliminary draft from Exeter's Planning Board. Like to read it into the record. The purpose of this memo is to make you aware of proposed changes to the Rhode Island Zoning Enabling Act that would restrict existing municipal land use authorities and could lead to a one-size-fits-all statewide zoning. These changes are being recommended by the Rhode Island House of Representatives Land Use Commission. These are expected to be incorporated into legislation in 2023. That is a top priority for the House Speaker Shakarchi. The Exeter Planning Board believes these proposed changes would negate policies in our state approved comprehensive plan that strive to accommodate growth, that avoids negative impacts to the quantity and quality of our sole source of drinking water as well as development density that can be reasonably supported by our rural community. Moreover, these changes will encourage greater development pressure on our farms, forests, and have negative impacts to Exeter's rural character and quality of life. We urge the Exeter Town Council to strongly oppose these changes and to encourage other town councils to do the same. The most egregious recommendations include, but are not limited to, eliminate public hearings for developments that conform to zoning, establish a growth rate quota for residential development in all cities and towns, state mandated lot sizes for municipalities, create statewide land development regulations, allow developers to override municipal zoning to build housing. There are other recommendations pending from zoning comprehensive plan and subdivision workgroups of the Land Use Commission that are not available to the public at this time. The primary stimulus for these recommendations is the need to address Rhode Island's housing crisis. The Executive Planning Board recognizes the urgent need for more balanced housing statewide and in Exeter. Upon completion of a low and moderate income housing development, that is near completion, Exeter will have approximately 7% of our housing in compliance with the Low and Moderate Income Housing Act that requires 10% of our housing to be low and moderate income. In addition, Exeter adopted a village ordinance over 10 years ago that would allow multifamily housing in a mixed-use compact development pattern in areas where appropriate water and wastewater could support the added density. It should be noted that not one developer has proposed to use this village ordinance despite the availability of a public drinking supply to encourage development at the intersection of Route 2 and Exeter Road. Rhode Island's housing crisis is a serious problem that needs to be resolved. We believe it can best be addressed by the following. One, compact growth to support more density should be encouraged, not mandated, in appropriate areas that can be adequately served by supporting infrastructure at a minimum drinking water and wastewater treatment. Number two, the need for more housing cannot be implemented without considering all the other issue municipalities are required to assess in accordance with the Rhode Island Comprehensive Planning and Land Use Regulation Act. Exeter, like all municipalities, has been making our land use decisions consistent with our state-approved comprehensive plan. The need for housing should not supersede all the other issues municipalities are currently required to address. To be successful in producing more housing in Rhode Island must have strong partnerships between state, municipal, private sector, and nonprofits. Establishing inflexible state mandates does not foster good partnerships. Four, municipalities need financial and technical assistance to establish creative approaches to housing that must be customized to meet unique municipal needs. This approach helped Exeter develop our current village ordinance. The housing crisis was caused by multiple factors over many years. It's not reasonable and it's inaccurate to single out land use statutes and municipalities as the sole source of this problem. Changes to the existing land use statutes will not be effective without comprehensively addressing all the issues that have caused the housing crisis. And so the Exeter Planning Board sent this memo to their town council, and they sent copy to us. And I would be in favor of us also sending such a memo back to the representative for us.
I spoke with the author of this letter, who's my neighbor, actually, good friend of mine. And I think we can all agree that housing, affordable housing is not cookie cutter. What works here is not going to work in a city and vice versa. But we do have a crisis, as stated in the letter. So we have to figure out how we can advocate for our rural communities at the State House and incorporate affordable housing with what fits for us instead of mandating something across the state. So I think as the legislative session starts, one of my goals, you know, being newly elected and having a lot of energy, is to hold, like, you know, coffee hours or informational sessions so that our community can really take part in legislation. So I think as these come to the floor, as we start talking about new bills, just like this, we should open the door for all voices to be heard so that we can advocate for our communities there. The other thing that I think, you know, we'd be foolish not to talk about and take full advantage of is the ADUs. That is incredibly beneficial for our rural communities. I don't know if you are all familiar with what that means and what that entails, but...
Yes, and we adjusted our own ADU ordinance to comply with the state. We weren't totally excited about it, but we did adjust our own ADU to adhere to the state mandate. And we still, I think, are looking for it to be for a family member relative. We don't want it to be just short-term rental.
What I would say in this particular case, Counselor Davis, this hasn't even been introduced yet. It can't even be introduced until January. And then after it's been introduced, it has to go through a whole hearing process, both in the House and in the Senate. And at that time, members of the town council, planning board, solicitor, town manager, local residents can come and testify on these before the committees.
That's good, but what we're reeling from is what happened in May with the solar state tax, the solar tax. And we don't feel like we had a chance to talk, you know. So we're getting out in front of the issues.
Which is good. And I will say, I would be shocked if this proposal that they have jotted down is going to be a wholesale, jumping over all town ordinances, zoning. I mean, there are, first of all, the one thing that is very key here is we know that in the town of Hopkinton, you've got a lot of ledge, a lot of granite, and places that are not suitable for developing affordable housing. We also know that where these parcels of land are in the town of Hopkinton can be sometimes difficult to put both a well and a septic system on it. State already requires that they have to be a minimum distance apart. So in order to meet those particular requirements, unless there is a plan that's brought forth, as was discussed here in this memo from Exeter, where you might have a packaged septic system that might serve several particular properties, or you might have a well that is approved to serve several properties. Unless you have a situation like that, the question will be, is this proposal where you have all of this that has been discussed by the Land Use Commission, whether in fact that's even doable in some of our more rural communities? And, you know, and then when you get close to the places like Kanache, for example, so much of that property around there is already open space. And I don't see anything that's going to suddenly change that. If you have anything that's along the river, along the Wood River, it's going to be very difficult to change that as well. So, you know, going forward, while I can understand your concerns, until it's been introduced, until we have a chance to even read what is going to be proposed by this, it makes it difficult. What I would say, you're taking a good path, however, in if you adopt some type of resolution of support towards saying, these are the things we feel must be addressed in the legislation. And our concerns specifically are if it oversteps what we've already got in place for zoning. Now, of course, for years, the town of Hopkinton has had two-acre zoning. There were some places where you have, I think it's R1, which can be anything from a substandard lot to as much as an acre. But typically, the R1 zone is about 20,000 square foot. And then you have your 80,000 square foot or RF80 lot.
We need to keep in mind, too, that Hopkinton shares an aquifer with Richmond. So it's, that needs to be taken into consideration when talking about building more housing.
Or water. We have more wells.
Right.
And just, I would like to say something, too. And we can't forget that we're also in a regional school district.
Right, absolutely.
So as, as most of us in this room know, as the Charro School budget goes up, the town budget goes up, right? Because of the leeway that the town has, right? We're very limited on what we can, you know, the voters can approve to raise our taxes in town. So most years, you know, we're kind of just figuring out kind of at the same time that we're going to have nothing to spend, right? We're going to be broke again, surprise, right? So, I mean, I think that's kind of, you know, a big thing, right? I mean, that's kind of, to me, it's one of the bigger things. And, you know, I just want to add, you know, now that, A, you know, obviously, it's in its genesis, it's just been jotted. But as you, you know, receive information, it would be nice to get us a heads up long before. Because, you know, we can't sit down and have discussions on this freely like you can. You know, we can't talk about certain issues, you know, together, right? Because that, because we're limited. We can only discuss in a meeting. So if we don't know about it, we can't put an agenda, we can't discuss it, that's a problem also. So, you know, it kind of puts us behind the eight floor. So I would just like to see, you know, from our representatives, a little more, you know, if, if you think, if you think things might affect Hopkinton, just throw us a heads up. It'd be great.
The other thing is the Providence Journal article. And some of the things that those of Shakarchi talked about, the one is, how would you like to spend that $610 million surplus? I mean, we can use it. We can use it. So that's, I would just like to know your thoughts on that. One of the things he doesn't want to revisit and reform the state's school aid formula, which is, which is...
So that is actually a proposal that's been put forth by the new Senate Majority Leader. And reopening discussions on that potentially will have a negative effect on the bottom line for the Charro district. So to be honest with you, I'm glad he doesn't want to reopen it at this point in time. The, as you most likely know, we lost our regionalization bonus a number of years ago. And one of the few things that we've gotten back from the state has been the category... from the state has been the categorical regional transportation money. So we got a substantial amount through my efforts of working with the governor, uh, starting back in February of this past year. And, uh, when we finally moved forward with adopting the budget that was, uh, adopted, uh, all of the regional schools actually received exactly what they were supposed to receive for the very first time since we adopted categorical regionalization money, uh, for transportation aid. My fear is if we change the formula again, um, more of it is going to go to the urban communities and the suburban communities are going to be left on their own. We already have had a negative impact on the last formula change. I don't want to see another formula changed.
Okay. Another thing was.
Oh, as far as the, the 600 and something million dollars, uh, I can only hope that we can perhaps reduce taxes a little bit more for, uh, estate taxpayers. Uh, I recognize Hopkinton could utilize that money. Yeah. It'd be nice if, if you had received that, that $1 million, you know, that, uh, that, that is tremendous. Uh, Mrs. Clinton used to.
That's like five years of our captain.
Yeah. You know, she, uh, she used to contact me and give me advice on vitamins and other things like that. So she was a real character and, uh, uh, when I heard the amount of money, I, I was quite impressed because, uh, she really was, uh, quite a lady.
They've talked about convening a constitutional convention, which is supposed to be done every decade and has not been done since 1986. And what's your comments on that? I mean, he's afraid that there's going to be dark money that's going to have excessive, um, influence on the constitution in a negative way, I guess, is what he thinks. So he's not into, to having a, a constitutional convention. He also asked the question, who would you pick? How would you pick them to be representatives? How would you pick the voters to be representatives on this convention meeting? So I just wanted to know what you guys thought about that.
Uh, to be honest with you, when I read the article, that was the first I, uh, even saw something about this. I think the, the last time there was a proposal, uh, it might've been either DePreet or Kachiri that called for a constitutional convention. So, uh, but usually it's the governor who calls for something like that.
Expanded privacy right in the state constitution to protect abortion rights, gay marriage, and interracial marriage. What do you think of that?
Those are already, as far as I know, codified in state law.
I've just, because he said expanded as if it hadn't happened.
Right.
Okay. Shoreline access, expand public access to shoreline, shorelines. What do you think of that?
Uh, I'm a hundred percent for it. I used to represent the town of Charleston years ago. One of my biggest complaints through the years was the fact that you've got these fire districts. You do not own a fire truck, do not have any firemen or firewoman, do not have a fire station. They contract for services and yet they call themselves a fire district for the sole purpose of owning a beach to keep you and me and everyone else off of that property. So as far as I'm concerned, the more access we have for people to get to shoreline, the better. Because Mike has to have a place to go fishing, right?
I mean, that's, I'm glad you're on board that rep, Kenny. Let me just jump in real quick, uh, Council. I mean, that's one of the biggest things in the last 20 years has always been a thing. And it's just, it, it, you're a hundred percent right, fire districts. And just that, it pretty much ends it if you're watching.
As far as I'm concerned, they should not be able to even, the law should be rewritten to forbid them from calling themselves a fire district. They want to call themselves a beach district because that's essentially what they are, is a beach district, which happens to then contract for fire services and nothing more than that.
Yeah. I mean, it's just one of those things. I am glad to see that the Wesley Town, not to get off subject, glad to see Wesley Town Council is gone. I mean, Spring Street, there's been a lot behind it, uh, Spring Street Avenue, Spring Avenue.
Yep. Down in Weekapark.
Yep. So it's, you go down, look out right through there. That's always been, I mean, people pulled up pictures of, hey, look, this was my, my grandparents back in the 30s and showed right where that. But I appreciate, appreciate you looking over that one.
Gun policies, the ban on large capacity magazines. He's going to wait to the federal.
Well, actu- actually, no, um, apparently that has already been decided by a court. Uh, and I think today, today or tomorrow is the last day.
Yesterday was.
For people, okay. So.
Divide those things.
To have, no, to turn.
Just to have 30 round capacity.
Yeah.
Turn them in, they gave you 180 grease day period.
Oh, okay.
So a lot of people did is they modified, they took them back to gun shops, you know, so like. Go value, they preserved, they modified, so it takes time.
And then free Ripta. What do you think of that? And I, the reason I asked that question is when I.
I would love to see Ripta actually offer some service down here.
Well, that's, it's funny you say that.
During my canvassing, Ashway wanted, uh, 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 a Ripta stop right there where the, the liquor store and the Dunkin' Donuts is in Ashway. So I was going to say, if we're going to get free Ripta, we may as well add another stop.
Exactly.
I, I think too, when you talk about affordable housing, you have to talk about transportation. And those two have to be spoken together in, in, in one conversation. Um, I was talking to a rep who represents Providence and was complaining about having to wait 20 minutes for a bus. I just started laughing. I was like, come on down to our neck of the woods, quite literally. You'll wait two hours for a bus. But I think that's part of the conversation with affordable housing in our area. And how do you have affordable housing without a bus route? Exactly.
I, I, I know one of the ultimate goals is to try to get, um, the train, the MBTA train expanded down to Westerly at some point in time so that people could get on at the Westerly Train Station and actually get to Warwick, uh, actually Wickford Junction, Warwick, Providence, or Boston. Um, but that's a negotiation that has to take place between, uh, Department of Transportation and, uh, the MBTA. As far as the buses go, as you probably know, we only get, right now, the service from the commuter lot here at Exit 1. And I think Exit 3, maybe they pick up and then they stop at, well, actually, I don't even know the exit numbers now. Exit 7, that used to be 3 and then, and whatever the exit is up in, uh, West Greenwich Coventry area.
You should have got a waiver on that. You really should have gotten a waiver.
Yeah.
It's, it's the only people that it matters is people that live in Rhode Island.
Right, exactly.
Really seriously.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't matter the people traveling through Rhode Island.
Right.
Because if you're, I mean, how many people have slept for Rhode Island?
Yeah.
Right.
You know, I mean, a lot of people have slept.
Yep. So, you know, as far as that goes, we, right now, we have those commuter buses. And I think Ripta may send, um, the bus up to Kanache Cliffs like a couple of times a week in order, but it's during the off hours. It's almost like an on-demand type service, uh, but it's a very limited amount of time that people have to utilize it. But I'd like to see that happen where Ripta is offering. And before they offer free service on a statewide basis, they really should be looking at how they can maximize the use of that on-demand product so that people in Hopkinton, for example, who do not have a car, can get to doctor's appointments, can get down to the, the grocery stores, uh, whether in Westerly or over in Richmond, just to have that access because, uh, um, you know, we really, at this point in time, are being short-changed on that. And to the point, they, for years, have been supposed to start offering the ability for individuals who need to get, for example, uh, to their, um, treatments, for example, down at Westerly Hospital. Uh, they were supposed to actually offer that on-demand service where you could call, I think, 48 hours in advance and they'd be able to send somebody out there. And that might be done through the MTM, which is the, uh, organization that was hired by the state in order to move patients around, move some of the elderly around and, and things like that. So it may be that that will be the ultimate way that they end up servicing the, the needs of those individuals.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of things that are important to Hopkinton and to lobby for us at the state level. And I don't actually remember us ever doing this ahead of time. It's the first time.
Yeah, it was actually.
You know, ahead of a new set.
Very good, very good, uh, very good idea by Council first.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know if you saw what Massachusetts recently did, but they, um, they decided to tax those making over $550,000 a year, generating $140 million, and they airmark those funds to education. That's something that could potentially happen in Rhode Island, airmark that to education. But I, I also think that we need to, uh, incentivize other districts to become regionalized like we are. There's no reason why there can't be a Coventry-West Warwick School District. And you can eliminate some, uh, you know, administration, administrative costs. Not that I'm advocating for anyone to lose their job, but who put a half a million dollars back into the schools and to the, you know, per, per child's dollars, right? So I think there's some stuff we can do, looking at education, to advocate for more money for our community. Maybe along the line, we'll get there.
Well, they, they did have a proposal for Newport and Middletown to look at merging this year. That went down. So actually, the last communities that actually became, uh, regional schools were Barrington, no, no, Bristol Warren, Bristol Warren. So, so we just have the four districts that are in the state.
Well, that's, that's the, you know, that's the, you know, the topic of conversation for another topic is how many we have? 38, 38 different?
39 cities and towns.
And 35 school districts, I believe.
I just crunched that down a little bit, but that's a different, that's a different story for another day.
It's a big discussion, is the regionalization of some, some things. I mean, I, I mean, you know, I, I just laugh because Rhode Island's so small, right? And there's so many districts and so many different little tiny things, right? Because we have this big little ego that, you know, we have to kind of be like everybody else.
Absolutely.
I mean, we're kind of a little microcosm, really, you know? I mean, look at our, the way that our elections go, right? I mean, we are probably a perfect little sample, sample of everything, right?
It's interesting, in Texas, Rhode Island would be one school district.
Right, exactly.
Kind of wild to think about it.
A ranch.
A ranch, right, right, normal like a ranch, right? That's it. Uh, one thing I just want to make sure I get out is, is I want to thank you, Representative Kennedy, for the work on the Ashway Bridge. Um, I reached out to you, you were very respondent, um, you kept me up, up to date.
Pictures.
You sent me pictures, uh, you know, you made sure Lisa let us know, um, and, uh, and, and you worked, you know, right with Director Al.
Alvedi.
Alvedi, you know, to make sure that happened and that. And, and just so everybody knows, I think 2025 is, is hopefully still on the radar.
So as of right now, uh, 2025, the High Street Bridge next to the Line and Twine, that bridge will be totally redone, which means it's probably going to, we're going to have a period of time where it's going to be one lane with a traffic light in each direction as you're going along 216. Then you get onto Laurel Street, the bridge next to the Line and Twine, that's going to have to be totally redone as well. Then there's some culverts along the way. And then finally, after all these years, because I think back to when my dad was still alive, um, when they paved Laurel Street, apparently they paved over trolley tracks. Never took the trolley tracks out of there. So the, the, the reality is that entire road service on Laurel Street is supposed to be under contract and will be redone during the summer of 2025. Uh, and the project will stop right about at the Potter Hill Bridge, which is where, uh, that bridge was redone a number of years ago anyway. So, so there'll be, the summer of 2025 will be a miserable time for people to get around the town. But in the end, after all these years, Laurel Street, the state will finally take responsibility and fix Laurel Street the way it was supposed to have been fixed years ago. And, uh, that High Street Bridge really is falling into disrepair. When I was out, uh, campaigning, um, back in October, just before the, the bridge actually got repaved, I took pictures on a Sunday when visiting Chris Vandembosh, sent those off to Director Alvedi on Monday. And on Friday, that road was repaved. So despite what you may have read on Facebook, that was done because my efforts on behalf of getting that information out to Director Alvedi in a timely manner. And by Monday the following week, the, uh, striping was done and that was taken care of. So we actually have a smooth surface on that bridge for the first time in a long time.
Yeah, I, I drive for it every morning. I, I used to drive a 92 Twitter call.
Yeah.
Uh, Rep. Kennedy, is there any, is there any future plans or do you know of doing some of like, say, Route 3 repairs?
So that section that was left out, I have so far sent to Director Alvedi and his staff no fewer than three emails requesting that information, uh, when I was out campaigning and talking to the people. Originally, when that project was proposed for the summer, it was supposed to be, um, from where we see just past the, uh, the post office, from that, uh, along Main Street. So I assumed this is the direction we're going to go, from where they left off, just past, uh, Spicers to where they were going to end right after the post office. For whatever reason, they missed it. And my emails to the director's office tells me, oh, we didn't realize that we, we missed that area in between. It's, I said, well, it is pretty odd because it's not a very long section of highway.
Right.
So now they have to look at adding it to a project for next year because it means bringing the, the scraper in, uh, in order to clean off the existing asphalt. But I've been told it's going to get taken care of. Uh, so, but it's so odd that they managed to do something like that. It, it just seems hard to believe. And I, in talking with some of the people, especially in the area of, uh, Baptist Church, those folks along that section of Route 3, um, because of, you still have the old concrete surface underneath and with some of those tractor trailer trucks that come along, it really shakes the house.
I used to live at 156 right across from the church and every time a tractor trailer came by it.
You shake that.
Now, no, now, now the trailer trucks going down Route 3 because poles are down, so.
Right.
A little quieter. All right. Steve?
I don't have anything.
Council Hurst, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I wanted to, um, uh, talk to legislators. The, the problem, the number one problem, of course, is transportation. But the real issue is that the state of Rhode Island, under Article 12, Section 1 of the Rhode Island State Constitution, specifically directs the General Assembly to promote education. And I think the General Assembly, uh, has fell short on that specifically because all these rural towns are limited and they will take a certain segment of our population will take any project I think is going to law property taxes. Property taxes, the number one issue. And since most property access goes to support public education, it's a very serious issue. Problem in the Charahoe School District is that you have one town, Charleston, because it's a coastal community and all the, all the coastal communities are the low-tax communities, municipalities in Rhode Island. That imbalance, the last time I knew, the sensible base of Charleston was bigger than Hopkins and Richmond combined. Uh, that's, that's one issue and.
So, so since I've sat on a number of the regionalization committees over the years that Charahoe had, that was always brought up. The problem you have is when the district was created, at that point in time, you had the three communities who all recognized that they wanted to have a regional school district. However, Charleston, even back then, um, was asked, let's put all of the tax base together and come up with a tax rate. And Charleston said, no, we're not going to do it. So the district's been around now for well over, what has it been, 60 years?
59, right? 58.
1968, but it wasn't totally regionalized until the 1980s.
Yep.
The issue is this, I believe it's a civil rights issue and I believe if you took it to federal court, I'm sure that you could have a court case. And courts do strange thing that they, just based on the facts, they could order, uh, a change regardless of any votes or anything else because courts do strange things. And that is the number one issue because these small towns can take, a lot of them will take any type of development, no matter how preposterous it is, because they want lower taxes. Taxes are the number one issue in Hopkinton. I must, next year I'll be 70 years old and they've always been. Taxes are the number one issue. It trumps everything. And we're spending, just on education alone, uh, 76% of our town taxes. And you have a situation where. And you have a situation where you have one town with that voting power can effectively set like three fourths of the tax rate of the two neighboring towns, Charleston to Richmond and Hopkinton. And there's a couple of other things I want to say and I, I would suspect that's not gonna change unless it's litigation anyway.
And, and that would not be something that we can initiate.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying, the General Assembly has the power under the state constitution, this General Assembly has the power to take away from the cities and towns to run schools if they chose to do that. The, the General Assembly chose years ago to take away the power of the cities and towns to have their own probate courts. Years ago, town councils were, including the town of Hopkinton, was, the town council was a probate court of this town. And years ago, the General Assembly felt compelled to take away the power of town councils to act as probate courts. And that's how we have all these probate judges. Years ago, not all cities and towns had probate judges. The town council was, in fact, a probate court and that was taken away. The General Assembly took away from the, the town councils the power to act as board of campuses back in the midpoint of the last century. And I, I have.
That was long before me.
Well, I know, but I have quite interesting in, in politics. But I want to put you on the spot, Representative Kennedy, because the biggest issue in Hopkinton is the people of this town made a commitment, and I voted against most of the big solar projects, to, under the premise that they were gonna get tax benefit. And you voted for legislation, and I know it was practically unanimous, if not unanimous, to take away these tax benefits that people were promised in meetings in the town of Hopkinton, who supported solar projects. So I want you to explain to the people of Hopkinton why you voted for that legislation. I know it was very popular and I know that Speaker Sakachi was the lead attorney for the brush and book proposal that was rejected by the town council. So why did you vote for that legislation that took away the tax benefits that towns like Hopkinton were looking forward to because of solar?
So Scott, the town contacted me regarding this. And they specifically told us about a piece of legislation being sponsored by Representative Carlos Tabon. And Carlos Tabon ran into his ethical issues and we did not see him again. The ultimate piece of legislation that passed was not Carlos Tabon. So, and I did not get a follow-up email from the town telling me about this other proposal. As you can imagine, at the end of the session, there are hundreds of pieces of legislation that reach our desk on a daily basis and we're expected to vote on a substantial number of those. So regarding this issue, I've already shared with Lisa before she left as town clerk, and I think she shared it with you. The League of Cities and Towns is working on a study committee on this particular thing. If they come up with a piece of legislation that's agreeable to all parties, I'd be happy to introduce that piece of legislation. Be very happy to do so. But before you continue, Megan wanted to talk about your other issue about regional schools, since she represents or will be representing Exeter-West Greenwich, as to how that's handled.
You'd have to fix your charter. You'd have to change it with the charter, but recently in Exeter-West Greenwich, we had a dip in enrollment in the West Greenwich side due to COVID. A lot of folks were pulling their kids out, doing homeschooling, wasn't an option on the Exeter side. So the way that our, our budget works is whoever has, you know, more kids pays more. And it was a substantial flip. So what we decided to do was a five-year average, so that at no point would you see a huge, you know, increase in, in your half of the bill. So there are options that you can, you can work into the charter. And the other thing, you know, with solar siting and, and clear cutting, I've had several meetings with folks that are really excited to work on introducing bills to reduce clear cutting and also smart solar siting, which would probably go to the finance committee because it will have a dollar attached to it. But these are issues that are gonna be addressed over the next two years and hopefully we can fix some of them.
Now, Megan, the question though, at the present time, does Exeter have a different tax rate than West Greenwich? Or do they have, do they combine the total tax base and come up with a tax rate for both communities based on that?
Based on enrollment. So whoever has more kids pays a little bit more. But again, not five-year average, you're never gonna see a huge spike like we did last, I think it was two years ago, we had a huge spike on the Exeter side. As an Exeter resident, I was not excited about that. So, so that five-year average will really help. So there are things, I'm sure Charleston wouldn't be too excited to pay more money.
Charleston's never gonna get it.
Yeah, yeah.
The bottom line is, before we change the subject, there was an MDT study done years ago by an outside management group who suggested they have an equalized tax rate, which, and it would be done gradually. So Charleston did not have really a big jolt at once, but that's been already done by outside management consultants that deal with education. The only thing I would ask you is, is the tax base, I know that West Greenwich has a lot of big businesses. Is the tax base of West Greenwich twice as much as a town of Exeter? Do you know that much?
I don't know. I don't know. I'm not sure what the answer to that is. I would say no, though. I don't, I don't think.
You've, you've got the industrial, commercial properties along ninety five, but then Exeter has commercial properties along
Right.
Route two.
Right. So I would say it's probably similar. West Greenwich invested heavily in solar, so, and they have, that's half of West Greenwich at this point.
No, I, I would say, one final thing on education, I think one of the things, I went to Charahoe, I wasn't in Bo-Tech, but one of the problems was, I don't think the state of Rhode Island is effectively treated vocational training, which they call career or technical. The state of Rhode Island, they used to have Qualis Park, they had Davies-Bo-Tech. And they really haven't treated this part of the state, career or technical, from state, from a state perspective, barely. They, I don't think the state across the board has treated career of vocational technical training for youngsters equally across the board. And I think that's something that needs to be addressed. In addition to that, and I know it's a problem because we live in a rural area, but there's also services like the Department of Motor Vehicles and things like that. The people in this part of Rhode Island, they're more or less obliged to go to Wakefield or some other place.
We are entitled to one day a week of having an office in Westerly. Because of COVID, because of the condition that some of the people visiting the Westley Town Hall were leaving the building in, the amount of time they had to spend to clean up the building for that one day of having the, the DMV there. Westerly said, enough, we don't want this here. DMV is in the process of acquiring some type of mobile type of DMV. I'm gonna assume it's gonna either be like a
Like a blood bag.
Something like, on that idea, a luxury bus or whatever we want to call it. And that is gonna be able to provide service to Westerly one day a week, that, to be able to offer all of the services, including real ID and the ability for people to come and register vehicles and, and other things like that. The goal right now, and I talked to the DMV director, Bud Craddock, is to try to get that purchased sometime this winter or spring, so that by the end of this fiscal year, which is June thirtieth, they hope to be able to start offering services here as well as over in Warren, Rhode Island, which is another place where they were supposed to have DMV services and no longer can offer.
When, when is the drop dead date for introducing legislation? It's usually a month sometime.
September, February fifteenth.
Yeah.
Got that one.
Yeah.
What date is it?
February fifteenth.
Except if it's municipal legislation. If it's municipal legislation, you're not bound by that. That can be introduced at any point. But usually it's suggested that it be introduced by no later than the end of April because once we get into May, things are moving at a very quick pace.
I would ask you, in light of the fact that we're in a regional school district, that concern regional school districts because that's more or less municipal, even though.
That would still apply to them as far as if there's legislation. So for example, I know there's the omnibus meeting coming up in January. So if something were to develop or if they decided they wanted to study a certain issue with the town councils from the three towns and members of the school committee, and they came up with a proposal, say in April or even early May, there's still time to introduce it.
The, I'll kind of get a little off track here, we're kind of.
They're supposed to be to, and legislation, because the General Assembly has the power to do many other things. And they have passed a lot of bills, like I stated earlier, changing things, like taking away the right of town councils to serve as probate court, boards of campuses and certain other things through the years.
I mean, the, the hope is that Hopkinton's Board of Campuses is doing a good job. That's one less thing that this council has to worry about. And as far as probate, you know, while it may have taken away your ability to do that, you've got a probate judge that does that. And we even offered up the ability, which the town of Hopkinton decided to go forward with, create a municipal court, which up, up until a number of years ago, you didn't have that opportunity to do.
No, I'm just, the, the point is that the General Assembly has so much power institutionally, they can do things that the towns don't realize. The state can tell you what you're gonna do, whether you like it or not. That's, that's the point of my statement. Not the validity of, of those actions.
Well, you know, I think we're both always accessible. My phone numbers, I'd be happy to give you that, my email address. Like I said, I'm really excited to have more community engagement and having community talks. And I actually already talked with the people for the, the ADUs. If we could put something on the calendar, maybe have a Zoom meeting to really, you know, get information out there that we can all be educated on what this means, especially homeowners, because this could greatly benefit homeowners if they made the decision to put an ADU on their property, they could be really offsetting the cost of their mortgage. So I think if something comes up legislatively, we should always be talking, communicating, but we're both accessible as we're here tonight.
One final, one final thing. What, what can you assure the people of Hopkinton that you're gonna protect their property rights? When you have boards and commissions of this town that can be circumvented by the Rhode Island General Assembly by passing laws regarding land use and things of that nature, that's a very serious matter. What do you plan to do to protect the rights of Hopkinton Town Government to, to have, make decisions on land use and thing, and zoning and things of that matter?
I think the best thing that we can do is keep communication, right? If there's something that doesn't look right and we're talking about it and you say, hey, this doesn't fit with our community, we can address that the best we can in the General Assembly. Can't promise that we can fix it because again, it's seventy five votes, we're just two of them. But we can certainly use our voices to advocate for our community and that's what I think we both plan to do this legislative.
I just asked that Hopkinton, is it different than Cranston? It's different than what, right? The biggest problem I have with Rhode Island is things are painted with a broad brush, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that, it really is. It's, it's like what's good for, and it's a very fine line. Because that whole description of how Rhode Island is, it's just, it just doesn't matter.
And Steve, Megan and I had talked earlier about the accessory dwelling units. And as long as people are following the requirements, which, full building permit, having an electrical inspector come in to make sure that it's properly wired, having the plumbing inspector, having the, you know, the fire inspector come in to make sure, because right now, you don't know where these units might be going in. And so, you know, they become an illegal unit.
That's, that, that my neighbor could double his footprint, right? And that's just to me.
That's the problem.
But that's not how it's designed to be.
Right, right. I mean, I mean.
But, you know.
In theory, it's brilliant. It could work in theory if it's done.
But it could be abused and misused. And that's the biggest problem. And that's the tendency and usually the habit that happens.
And, and perfect example, if we're talking about the town of Westerly, most of those houses are on a septic system as well as town water.
There's a lot of non-conforming in Westerly, which, which that bill kind of, I, I, because I followed it all, right? I sat there and watched Westerly.
But Westerly has actually.
Sitting there talking about, you, you want to know a great way to get our affordable housing numbers are up? It's to make all those un, oh my God, but all, all those non-conforming apartments we have.
Illegal dwelling units.
And then we're just gonna increase our unaffordable by four percent.
Well, and, and that's kind of. And in fact, the town of Westerly hired a company to go door to door and they asked to go into the basement of every dwelling unit in order to make sure that there were no illegal units in there or some way that drainage was being forced into the town drains, which ultimately were pushing everything through the sewer system. Because the town of Westerly is gonna have to spend a substantial amount of money on, on repairs to that.
Yeah, we're, we're just not the same. We might, all, all of our people might shop in Westerly, we might, you know, that's where all of our business goes, that's where I might go to the beach, but.
I live in Exeter.
Yeah, sure.
We don't even have a police department. We don't have a grocery store. So when you're talking about, you know, rural living, believe me, I'm right there with you.
Yeah, I mean, we're, I mean, how many stoplights we have in town? So I mean, that kind of qualifies as two, you know? I mean, if you wanted to pass laws based on stop signs in towns, you know, give you that kind of, and it blinks, right?
All right. Everybody else, everybody else having bills for?
I'm good.
Reps of Kennedy.
Thank you.
Reps, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to come up here, please.
Carolyn Light, forty-three, Forest Glen, wife. My comment is, there are communities that are really close to complying to the low moderate income housing requirements. And we strive here in our community with every project that comes before us. If there's a way to make it work, we make it work. I would ask, what do you guys do with those communities that don't put any effort into complying? I would ask that the state of Rhode Island take a look at those communities. And if there's no penalty, there has to be some type of measure designed to offset what's going on here because it's not fair to our community, our infrastructure.
I want to address that. So I, I was on a Zoom today with Rhode Island Housing Works. Hopkinton, obviously I'm looking at the district that I represent, which is Richmond, Exeter, Hopkinton. Hopkinton and Exeter have made strides, wonderful strides. Richmond has not. So Richmond's at three point seven one percent affordable housing. They're not working as hard as the other two towns to, to reach that ten percent goal. So I think when we talk about affordable housing and when they look at different communities to really push affordable housing in, they're looking at those communities first, not, you know, not a community that's making strides. So I, I don't think that, you know, Hopkinton is gonna be picked out. Richmond might be though, because they're not making the same strides. So I think when they are looking at that, they're looking at the bottom and they're looking up, so.
Okay, so my concern is that what a community like Richmond is, is not doing and their neighbors are doing, it, it would be the negative factors that are gonna be highlighted and that broad brush that comes out of the state of Rhode Island is gonna be wiped right across what we're trying to accomplish here. And, and to keep the stability and the momentum in what our community is doing is what we try to do as a planning board, right, guys?
There's, there's things that, you know, Richmond is working on. So the preserve in Richmond, obviously, that will offset any strides they've made with affordable housing. Because the preserve is, you know, housing for million, millionaires, right? So there has to be effort put into making the same strides on the other side. And they're working on that in their planning board and their zoning board. I'm pretty sure in the next year, you're gonna see some great ideas coming out of Richmond. So they know what they have to do and they know where they have to put the affordable housing. So though it hasn't been built yet, it is. So though it hasn't been built yet, it is in the works. I think that as long as the towns are working towards the goal, I don't know if it's going to be, you know, the first thing that the state looks at. I know Rhode Island Housing, though, and we are in a housing crisis. They want to see more affordable housing, but we we have to advocate for what that looks like here versus what that looks like in Princeton, Providence, Warwick. It's going to look different and we will advocate that way for our community, for you, for Hopkinton.
The the best thing that Hopkinton ever did was, for example, the approval of the units over here. That has turned out to be a tremendous boost to the town. And then the existing units that were already up at Knatchit Cliffs have also been. If if another project like that were to come along, Hopkinton probably would hit what they need to to reach that 10% level.
And a big thing with rural towns too, right? I mean, affordable housing now, you're you're farther away from resources, right? So you go back to transportation again, right? So we don't have transportation. So I see some of these projects we have in town potentially that are like, oh, my God, like, so they're affordable, but they're kind of far away from all the kind of necessities in the day life.
So so Charleston had a a project proposed several years ago. And it ended up getting shot down because there was no access to public transportation whatsoever for that particular location. At that time, it was going to create a substantial number of affordable houses or or units. And the town of Charleston said, no, no, it's not going to work.
I mean, you're talking about a rural area where we rely on groundwater and septic system, right? And and you're applying for a lot, where are you trying to change its zoning versus, you know, these out of Coventry, some of these areas that are more rural, but yet they're kind of, they're closer to those, you know, some of those resources.
Exactly.
There are some units that are 80% AMI. So I mean, you're talking 80%, you know, AMI here would be, you know, in the $50,000 range. Most people making $50,000 have a car. So there are some workarounds with rural units that, you know, could be looked at as well. Annual median income of the community, so the annual income here would be different too than other communities.
Okay, and I'd like you to keep in mind that we do adhere to planned growth. We we have a number that we work with on an annual basis and that's measured and monitored. And I just want to make sure that, it's like the kid cleaning the room. Richmond, you better build your affordable housing. Okay, we promise we're going to do it. And 10 years later, like, well, we're still working on it. Well, what's going to happen?
So so a lot of that area, for example, with the gravel bank is off of Stilson Road. That was supposed to have a substantial number of affordable units. And, you know, that whole project is ground to a hole. Nothing seems to be happening there and therefore nothing new is happening as far as on the affordable side either.
Okay, well, I would hope that more emphasis could be be put on the communities that are not interested in complying. As far as I'm concerned, I read that as we're not interested in complying. And because they get their tax revenue from our communities, they shop there, we get our gas there, we eat there. I would ask that at the state level, you take a look at the noncompliant communities, those that are under 5% maybe. And when you are reshaping your agreements, your requirements for low income, moderate housing, that you also find a way to implement some form of encouragement to those communities. I e withdraw some money for whatever low income programs they have. I mean, you have to penalize people. The only thing people get is money.
Well, that's actually in.
And give it to us. So penalize them and.
Reps, I think this is something we could have as a little bit of sidebar.
Thank you.
Go with me. Thank you, Carol. Thank you, reps. Have a good Christmas. All right. Yeah. Hold on, let me, let me, well, there was this on this. Before we entertain, if someone wants to make a vote, I think maybe we should just wait, see how the, see what comes up with some of the stuff with the affordable housing and.
And hold on, sending our letter.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is something we could come back to.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Do we need to put, Steve, do we need to put?
What do we, what do we, what do you?
I had, I had said that we should kind of write a letter similar to the Exeter memo.
Oh, okay.
Send that letter to the.
It was possibly to vote on, possibly vote on legislation, but legislation hasn't really come forward, so there's not really reason to vote on it because we haven't seen where it is, right?
Right, I mean, we can, I I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, but like I had asked, I mean, I kind of hope that, you know, gives a heads up. Soon and later, I mean, now it's on our radar, right? I mean, we do know, you know, so I don't know, I mean.
Do we want to come back?
I mean, they're here, right here, you know what I mean? We just told them, you know what I'm saying? But if if it's a letter to the to the legislature as a whole, that's that's.
No, I was, it would be to, it would have been to them.
Yeah.
So it's not something I really want to, we can entertain a vote on, but there's really.
No, I think we're good. I think we're good.
I think we've spoken with what Miss Davis and Hersch and everybody else.
Yeah.
About to speak to them directly.
So do we want to come back at a certain amount of time and vote on or please review?
Or we just ask for update, you know?
Yeah, I think ask for an update later.
No, I think that, you know, as more information comes and as maybe legislation is introduced, we'll we'll get this back on the agenda when it's when it's time.
Thanks, good.
Thank you.
All right, excellent, thank you. All right, so we're going to go back up to the top. I will come back to number one, not our unfinished business, but I want to go up to town manager's report.
Good evening, council. The the animal control ordinance is out of date pretty substantially. It's like 40 years since it's been looked at and revised. It was brought to our attention by the police department and the animal control officer Samantha Bowen. She's done a great job working on it with the chief. She has brought to me some proposed revisions. I've worked with attorney Seipol, he's been very helpful with his insight. And I think it's time that we take a look at it and propose some changes. The biggest thing would be the the fees and fines that are being used are written in Rhode Island general law. And we would have to actually get that sponsored to see any sort of changes. There are municipalities in the state that have provisions to the general law that allow them to apply different fees than what's stated in the general law. So I think we would have to get it sponsored by a representative to get that updated. Some of the fees were really low. I mean, we're talking like $5 a night, I think, if I remember. It's it's just so outdated that that that's not covering, you know, the food for the the dog.
I I sat down and took a look at the the state laws because I wanted to make sure the town's ordinance was was updated to be consistent with what the the state laws are today. And I realized that, you know, I I thought it would be the towns that would set the fees for things like, you know, the boarding rate. If you pick up a a dog and the, you know, the owner has to pay whatever to get the dog back. But some of those numbers were in the state laws set at those low levels. So I there there were a couple of items I think that might need on the state to approve the town raising those limits. But there were a lot of other changes too, just because it was so out of out of date.
It was 1956, I saw.
It was, it was something, yeah, I mean, it was, it was many, many decades ago that that was, that that animal control ordinance was put in place. So we we went through and and tried to update that. But one of the issues is the, I think the town's power to up those fees might be limited and we might need the the assistance of the town's state delegation with that at some point.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give a status update and, you know, see if any of the councils wanted to sponsor, you know, or or review it and see the proposed.
Now, we already had this in front of us at one time.
Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay, but but there's some more amendments and stuff.
Not really. I mean, it's, it just kind of got pushed on the back burner because of everything that was going on.
So do we have to open a hearing before? Do we have to reopen a hearing?
I I think that what happened before was was probably it was the council authorizing me to work on it.
Oh, that's what it was.
And then I that that has been done now. And basically, at this point, you know, I've I've done my part and and Brian and Sam Bo and the animal control officer, we've all kind of moved it as far as we can without a council person to sit down, review it and decide if they would like to sponsor it.
Sure. How many pages is it?
It's not too bad. I got a red line copy so you could easily see what the the changes are, the proposed changes are.
Are you looking for where the council's just sponsored?
Yes.
Councilors would do like to sponsor the.
Animal control.
Yeah, I haven't read it, but I will sponsor it in for discussion purposes. I'd be glad to and I'll probably might vote for it, but I will sponsor that.
Okay, and so I'll I'll provide you guys within a a red line copy for your review. And then we'll have a discussion in a future council meeting.
And one thing I did when I was, when I was preparing this draft was I I believe that the end of every section, I put in the reference to the to the state statute that it corresponds to, so that you can cross reference that and and see how the, you know, the ordinance is being done to match what what the state law is for the most part.
And so we'll get that in a packet.
Yep.
Send it out and Steve, are we open to hearing? Do we have to open a hearing?
No, well, tonight was just to inform the council as to the where the status of this project was and to hopefully find someone to sponsor it. So then we could get it on for a hearing and discussion and vote later.
Excellent, understood, thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Bye bye. It's funny, it's, it looks like Rudy must have had it as well, it's kind of weather.
Must have, right?
All right, moving forward, council appointments discussed and considered, possibly vote to advertise for the positions for town solicitor. Town solicitor, zoning solicitor, planning solicitor, prosecution lawyer and probate judge.
Mr. President, I move that these positions be advertised in the the Wesley Sun and on the homework site.
Motion on the floor, second. Right there, counsel? Motion's on.
I think. Is this for discussion?
No. Motion and a second and discussion.
There's no second, so you can still discuss it and you just say there's lack of, the lack of second, it didn't take an effect.
I think after more review since the last council meeting, now I'm due to all this politics up here. I think we should find a way to discuss this some more. After hearing a lot of public comment, not just here tonight, out of the town and other conversations. I think this is something that councils should discuss, maybe in executive session, however that works.
I don't, that's, I I so from my experience and and Steve will confirm is that, I mean, this isn't necessarily something we can have in executive session. We have to have this discussion in public, right, Steve?
Well, there is a item that does allow executive session meetings for discussions about job performance.
Right, but that would end up being relating to him. So that's, yeah, so so I I was, before council Hurst had made his motion, I I was going to make a a motion to not vote to advertise.
I agree.
So that that's where I was going to go, you know, go with it. Because I I I just think that our our legal representation is excellent right now. Reasons why I I had problems with it before is just because there was some, there was some other issues. It wasn't like I hadn't reached out to the previous solicitor and talked and 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 did some other things, you know? There was a new council, you know, we had three new heads, we had a lot of just stuff going down the road with solar and stuff. I was very present and, you know, three years of watching meetings, being there and just kind of see when, you know, what went on. So so with all that said, I I'm going to make a motion that we do not advertise.
This is motion on the floor, so you have to.
No, you know, my motion was a second, so it was lost.
Right, so.
Let's back up, bounce them off and go ahead.
So I make a motion that we do not advertise the positions of town solicitors, zoning solicitor, planning solicitor, prosecution lawyer and probate judge.
I second.
Second, this is motion second discussion?
Yes, I am going to vote against this motion. Town council is elected to make decisions and the politics of lawyers is interesting. And a lot of it's been governed in recent years by the solar debate. And I know a lot of people weren't satisfied by the previous lawyer. The background for the people of Hopkinton is the fact that a number of people want to have a chance to be lawyers for the town. We're contacted by that people. And I think that we should advertise, if you don't want to put it in the Wesley Sun, at least put it on the town website, let people put their names forward. And you can still retain the present council if the majority of the council wishes to do that. We, because the feelers are out, you don't even have to advertise lawyers are interested. And they should be able to make that pitch, even if we choose to retain our present council. A lot of people like or dislike lawyers because of who they represent. And I know this town has been poisoned by the solar debate, depending upon what side you was on.
There's a lot of assumption, Scott.
Well, I I don't think it's an assumption, I think it's a fact. And the fact of the matter is that it did poison a lot of the politics in this town. It poisoned, I I voted against most of the big solar and I I'm confident that I voted the right way. I voted for one solar project and I got some criticism for that. But the bottom line is that people should be able to put their names forward. And make a case regardless of whether you choose to retain your present council. And you're cutting people off that want to put their names forward and and apply to this town council. So I'm going to vote against this motion.
Council president, if I may.
Council Verns.
I wish for putting this out in public and I would put that out. Due to the fact of coming in new, I wanted to see what was out there, who was out there, you know, just learning into the situation. However, after talking with zoning, during my liaison and other people in the town. I have come to realize that there is a lot going on on the town that we are stepping up to it as new council. And we go and throw a wrench into some of these projects that are already set back. Where are we going to stand? Some of these projects, we're not going to be able to oversee and be thankful that they're done within our two year term for us to be reelected.
I I, you know, I concur with you on that. I've always said that a town council comes in, you know, like when we came in, Steve, or I came, all three of us came in, the clock is ticking. Yes, I understand what you're saying, go ahead.
So I don't know where I'm supposed to stand on that situation, whether I'm supposed to vote, not vote, whatever. Because I was part of that motion, I want to say, in the beginning when we discussed it, my first meeting here, as this one, I'd like to step out of it.
Well, for the most part, I will say, so at 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 the last meeting, you, we we agreed to add this to the agenda to be discussed. Because it was just kind of vaguely put out, just at a point, it didn't, it it's an appointment, right? And then the discussion went into advertising. Because it was advertised as an appointment, you can only assume that you're picking, right? And that you're going to vote for for somebody. It it mentioned no advertisement. So, I mean, you can do whatever you want to do, I guess, on 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 the vote. But, you know, for the most point, you know, I like to add your comments, there is a lot of, there are a lot of things going on in town. I know because I follow almost every single detail that happens in town. Right, exactly. And I mean, it, and I mean, you know, the plan board members can tell, I mean, these things have been going on for three, four years. I mean, some cases 10 years, there's, there's, there's cases that have come back after 10.
I'm the only person in this town that has followed all the major projects that you see on the agenda. This guy has got 36 years under his belt as the as the chair of the planning board. You know, we all come and go.
So, right, right. So so my my point is, and this is my opinion, before Mr. Seipol came here, it was broken, right? It's not broken, okay? And if it's not broke, I'm not willing to fix it, you know? I I mean, just Google Steve's, I mean, his his law, they win their cases, they're thorough, they're professional, they're excellent, they are not political. They, I mean, I I I don't know where Steve stands, I've had plenty of conversations with Steve. I don't care where Steve stands. I don't care where anybody stands here really, other than our Donish. That's it.
I have realized that there's state projects going on.
So.
And there's a lot of money that's lingering out there for our community of projects once they're done. So we throw the wrench in the middle of that situation. Where do we stand?
I've been to municipal court here in town. I've witnessed it. I've, you know, come to watch it. You know, I've come to watch a probate court. Both judges are fantastic, right? They've been here for a long time. They know the whatever. I mean, you know, I mean, some of the people are repeat offenders. You know, they show up and they see the judge and, you know, they probably know each other on a first name basis, you know, but I I just don't. I don't see it, you know, obviously, you know, it it wasn't easy for me when I first stepped on the council last time to, you know, to want to make that decision, but I thought that I knew well enough. Not that I was new, right? I was new in the council, but I wasn't new to the politics. I wasn't new to the information. I wasn't new to the projects. I wasn't new to what was happening in town because I was eating, sleeping and living it all the time. Right? So so for me, I I think I made a better better, well informed decision. I reached out to Al. I talked to some of the people, you know, and 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 just said, hey, you know, I mean, we, you know, what's going on, you know? Again, there's a motion on the floor. I think Sharon seconded, but we're still up for discussion.
Yeah, I I will say I'm a buyer from the seventies. Okay. Yes, long time, long time. And I love going out for bid because you get. I love saving money for our for whatever organization. Okay, sure. And.
I mean, in a perfect world, that sounds fantastic, but not not many details.
But I will say, but I will say, having been the planning liaison, I agree. That. These projects go on and on and on. And you there's a lot of information that is presented at the planning board. And so if we it is true that if we went to a different, chose a different planning solicitor. They would be starting over. And so I I I do appreciate the. Opinions of the of the members of the plan. And I always listen to my constituents.
And this is why we had this conversation.
So that's why I'm willing, I'm willing to say, maybe this isn't. We don't really need to do this. Yeah, I think we should just continue with the people we have.
The people in town.
And I can say that by not posting positions and maintaining our current legal council and in our judges and and lawyers and stuff, I I think that is the best interest of the town.
Yeah.
You know, because there's a lot of people that don't know what's happening in town and they're relying on us to know.
There's a lot I didn't.
You know, and.
I mean, let's let's let's, you know, be honest with you. I mean, lawyers get a bad rap with the Republican, Democrat. Well, I'm just saying, everybody, you know, everybody's, everybody has a special feeling in their heart. All right. So any other discussions? There is a motion. There's a second we discussion. You want to take it to vote and the vote is?
Moffett, yes.
No, no.
Oh, the Moffett is the Moffett. The motion is to, hold on right here. So the motion would be to not. Advertise the positions of town solicitor, zoning solicitor, planning solicitor, prosecution's lawyer and probate judge. Or should I make the motion to.
Reap or to.
But then again, do we do we even know the prosecution's lawyer and probate judge are interested?
Does we come out of this, right?
I I know the Judge Urso expressed interest in being reappointed. I don't know about the prosecution's attorney.
Maggie Steele, Margaret Steele?
No, Judge Urso is the probate.
Probate, right, but.
Maggie's municipal.
Yes.
I think prosecutions is Mike.
I think last year, I think you reappointed the municipal court judge, Judge Steele.
Yep.
So, Marina, before we before we vote on this. We're still going to go back to the thing of appointing. Is that something we could put on the next agenda?
Don't know the. Do though, because I don't think.
No, I don't. Right, right. We don't have contracts. They so our they they serve at the pleasure of the council.
So it doesn't expire.
So, yeah, no, right, no, that's 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 my recollection of of last time.
Every two years.
Right, a new council comes in and and it's their purview to do as they wish.
But it it should be a fact that there's two two people of expect and interest.
What does that matter? What does that matter?
Stop, hold on.
We've got a vote.
But back to my question, after we vote on this, whichever way it goes. Do we have to have another vote to?
We need to research that because I don't know that I don't. Do you know if they need to be reappointed?
I don't. I I think that.
Go forward.
I I think that we all serve at the pleasure of the council. I.
There's no contract like in cases for.
No. I will, right, I'm I'm planning to keep coming here every other. Every other Monday until you tell me to stop.
All right, here we go.
So we're ready for votes.
So repeat your motions.
Okay.
Hundred percent clear.
My motion is that we do not advertise the positions of town solicitor, town. Town solicitor, zoning solicitor, planning solicitor, prosecution's lawyer and probate judge.
All right, that was the motion. It's been second, bad discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Moffett, aye.
Davis, aye.
Chris, no.
Burns, aye.
Gary, aye. Motion passes. All right, good enough. Moving forward, vacancies and appointments, discuss and consider to accept the resignation of Polly Hopkins and the Historical Commission.
I make a motion to accept her resignation.
Hold on, I just want to read this letter real quick before we accept her resignation. Dear town clerk of Hopkins, Rhode Island, this is letting let this letter be my resignation to the Hopkins Historical Commission. As I will be sending in another role as an elected chair of a school committee member. I hope in the future to serve again on the commission again. Should be another elected position, not come in impede it. Sincerely, Polly O. Hopkins. That's it. And I wish Holly the best, Holly the best in her endeavors with the school committee. Uh, somebody like to entertain a motion.
And I'll make a motion to accept her resignation.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Chris, aye.
Davis, aye.
Burns, aye.
And Moffett, aye.
And Gary, aye. Motion passes. Good luck to Polly. All right, next up. Next up, discussion, considered vote to appoint Joseph Monroe to the charter commission.
I moved.
Even know that guy? We even know?
I moved you appoint Joseph Monroe to the to the charter commission.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
You think he's up to it? Just busting Joe.
Motion is second.
Be good.
State's vote, all in favor, say aye.
First, aye.
Davis, aye.
Burns, aye.
Moffett, aye.
Gary, aye. Joe, make us proud.
Thank you, thank you. For your service.
All right. New business. Uh, new business, number one, discuss and consider possibly vote to continue the term of communications committee with your new website place.
That's I'd like to make that motion. I did talk to Ella. And basically, it's it's not until the new website is in place. It's until the new website is functioning. Well. Okay, so basically, they just want to be able to help.
Oh, it's in, okay, it's not. It's to its place. Okay.
Okay, if they just want to be able to to provide advice and to be the testers of the website from the residents' viewpoint. Uh, and work with Jeff until it's functioning well. Like, for example, it's really funny. She didn't even know. If you go to the 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 website today. She didn't know where to look for the meeting. Because we have a little white box right on the front that says updated town meeting. Well, you you would think that you must be able to 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 lock right onto that and it will it will bring you to the meeting's agenda. But really, to find a meeting agenda is that it's in the green banner. There's a word meetings and you take that dropdown and then it has agendas. Uh, and minutes for the for 2022. You click on that and then you see where you can pick from that, you know, what. Meeting you want to look with their minutes or the agenda. So it's 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 just not self intuitive yet.
But that's the old website.
That's true. And so what she what that what the communications committee wants to do is to be to work with Jeff and as he implements the new. Website.
Was never the.
Well, this is what.
They were never a website. Committee. We have, we have people.
But what they what they concluded with all of their.
I mean, I don't see.
No, wait, 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 what they concluded with their their research was that this website would be. The best way to be a communication tool to the resident. This website is going to have a lot of abilities that will make it easier for. And it would be the best way to do the communication. If they didn't not, they're not going to do a newsletter. They're not going to do, put ads in 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 the newspaper.
Kind of just sounds like they want to beta test it, just kind of be part of what's happening.
They want, and then they'll walk away when, you know, so.
I mean, sounds pretty simple.
So I just said, I think that's great. And I will tell you that as the liaison from the council, this is perfect for me.
We can.
Because I always, you know, I spent a lot of years implementing planning software so I can, and I spoke from a user viewpoint. And I could also understand the 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 software people. And so I said, this will be perfect. I I'm really looking forward to this and I want to help them with their with the beta testing. That's basically what they're talking about. And it's not going to be around forever and they're not going to do newsletters and stuff.
Okay, so. Do we?
So anyway, so I'm making since their their mandate ends December 31st right now of this year, 2022, right? Um, I'm suggesting that we continue the term, making a motion to continue the term of the communications committee until the new website functions well, which they're hoping.
Functions well?
Yeah.
Kind of, I think.
I know, I know. Or you could say, you could say, they're not going to be here forever. I don't, I tried to call Jeff and he and we didn't connect.
I think.
Find out when he what his what his schedule is for the full implementation of the new website.
Here's my question. I mean, I think the communications committee, when Bob Marvel was with us, it is a great idea, it was great implemented. I think that's something we could really, really push, push forward. But if I'm reading what you're saying is once this website is up, they disperse or they just continue, they continue on.
They disperse.
So do you want to maybe like a six month, six month?
Well, I wanted to ask Jeff, what was his, what was his schedule?
Kind of tough to say definitively when the website is going to be live, because I can say, I can tell you, I talk with them regularly about this. And there's a lot of moving pieces. There's training that goes involved. There's, there's a, you know, photographer that's providing content to us. There's. A lot of moving pieces, the departments we've met with all the departments initially to review their current pages and to test them and to revamp them. Basically, get rid of any old stuff that's outdated. So there it's it's kind of hard to say definitively when it's going to be.
They're only advisory for the most part, right? I mean, so so they're not going to sit here and tell Jeff that he needs to change.
Committee of people working. That's all.
Jeff, Jeff is the IT guy. Jeff is the one that has to do the daily stuff.
Which is why I left, I tried to contact him and he's saying he's going to call me tomorrow.
Before we.
But I would say, you could say December.
We want to get Jeff's. To say have Counsel Davis make a motion and say continue for six months, then all of a sudden there's a software jam. So like, do you want to maybe ask Jeff his, ask Jeff, come on and ask, just give his opinion real quick? Right, just knock on the door. I get it.
I can hear you. I know you guys can hear me. Lock the door.
Yeah, don't lock it.
Putting your prime rib order in or something?
When do we think we're going to go? So I'm I'm thinking I have.
I'll I'll come here like I preached to everyone else. I have my last training class scheduled for about two weeks from today. Um, that training class will be. The final edit, how I can change images, how I can change agendas, most important thing, minutes and the such. I would probably say about a month after that, we'll be able to actually get it to the point of making it available. Um, to actually start truly looking at it. So we're probably 30 days, 45 days. From me having all the edits done from, I met, like Brian said, with every single department head, they gave me the information they wanted off. They suggested information they wanted on. I still need to go through all of that with Brian. We're not just going to put information up that people want. We need to put information up that they need. Uh, for the public. So we want to make sure we do this once and we do it right. So, um, that's the most important thing.
So it sounds like on or before June 30th, you're done.
Oh, we want it done a lot earlier than that because I have a lot of other things I need to get done too. So, but you know, that would give me a lot of time.
So.
Yeah.
She may, if Counsel Davis made a motion, say extended six months.
And end of March or April.
Yeah, let's probably end of April would probably be more than enough time. Because if like what I heard, you know, beta testing and actually reviewing the site and such like that, I think the end of April would be more than enough time. Uh, the initial link, we actually have, Brian gave me some recommendations, uh, change some, you know, make the colors a little softer because they're kind of vivid right now. They kind of pop out at you. So.
So I I just want to be clear on on something because I've met with the communication committee. I think they have great ideas. I I have no problem if the council wants to have them data test, but. How does this work? Like if they say, oh, you should put this here and change that here, like in there's a committee and town employees that are already deciding, making these decisions, like, do we have to listen to this advisory?
No, they they're just making, going to make suggestions.
Okay.
That's all they are in that.
Suggestions of.
So.
Content.
So you, so how's this? You tell us what suggestions you're looking for from a user standpoint. Is that kind of what, I mean, potentially, I mean.
I think potentially, you know, and Brian, you tell me if I'm speaking out of, content is the most important thing. What do people want to see?
Sure.
What do they need to see?
Exactly.
Not how it works or where things are. Because a lot of that, we can't even drive. We're working with a template.
The only thing I think they really wanted to be able to say is. For example, the the tax rebates, you know, that you get for being old and whatever. I don't even know, you know, where that is.
Senior exemption.
The senior exemption on the tax assessor website.
It's going to be a lot more.
You know, things like that. That's.
Right, so.
The reason we're investing in this website is to make it intuitive and easy, user friendly.
So right now you can't search for that.
Right, I mean, right, you're gonna, it that's, it's like we're getting criticized on something that's not even been published or put together. But both you'll easily be able to find the content and I don't think that's an issue. I mean, if there's, people find that it's.
Yeah, I always say if you can't find it, 377-777.
Or right in there, right?
I think input's always good. If if you guys want to have the beta test, absolutely.
Thank you.
But as far as like consulting.
Yeah, no.
I don't think that we need another.
No, I don't think you need to tell people how to do your job, no.
No, no, no.
I don't think he.
Absolutely not.
Bosses.
Please, no, I have enough.
I don't think that.
That wasn't, that wasn't it.
Yeah.
All right, guys, let's move, let's move.
Okay.
Okay, then if they get that kind of way, let us.
Yeah.
Make sure that.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, so I make a motion again that we continue the term of the communications committee until. April 30th, 2023.
Motion's on the floor.
A second.
Second, discussion, all in favor of. Moving, having the communications committee extended out to.
April 30th. 2023.
All in favor?
Burns, aye.
Davis, aye.
First, aye.
Moffett, aye.
Gary, aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right. New business, number two, discussing considerably possibly to vote to vote an ethics training session via Zoom given by the Rhode Island, Rhode Island Ethics Commission.
You do not have to do that if you attend. The newly elected official's orientation that will be Friday, January 6th, put on by by the.
We printed mine right out.
League of Cities and Towns and the Trust.
Excellent.
Okay, it'll be at the at the Crown Plaza on January 6th for all day. So.
And it's free.
And it's free.
And you get fed.
And you get that. So I think we all need to do that. And then we don't need to do the, we don't. And you get fed. So I think we all need to do that. And then we don't need to do the, we don't need to schedule an ethics.
Why, why we have to do this? It's required?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what is your question?
Steve Seifel, is, is this required, this training?
Marita?
No, I'm not aware that it's required.
But it's really good training. It's really good training. And I attended it the first time I got on the council.
I, I think it is very helpful, because you, you do want to be aware of, of all their.
It has open meetings law. It has a variety of.
Right. You want to be aware of the ethics laws and all those things to protect yourselves.
I recommend it if, if you haven't.
Yeah, I'm going to go. All right, so.
So we don't have to do that.
Do you want to make a motion to not do Zoom and go with the?
We just say, we just, we don't have to do anything. We can just say that we're not going to do it. We can just, just table that discussion, because, um, Council Burns here is, is, is going to do the in-person one, right?
So am I.
Yeah, so, so there you go. So, so out of having no necessity to do it, then I, then I think we just, just knock that item right off the agenda there.
Go ahead. Yep. All right. All right. Going back to unfinished business. Discussing, consider possibly vote on ideas just to be included in the Charahoe Omnibus Meeting in January, Council Hurst.
Yes.
Anybody else has anything that into it?
I, I got three items. The historical background on this is that many years, uh, the member towns were invited to bring up suggestions, what they wanted to discuss. As you, as you know, uh, we are bound by open meetings laws, so we cannot really discuss a business unless it's duly advertised and posted, and anybody that's interested can discuss something. And so I, I got three things I want to discuss. And I just have a problem. And some of them are related to budgets, but they specifically have to uh, be addressed in my view. So I'll make a mo, I, I got three motions I'm making. We'll see where it goes. I make a motion that we request an outside management study be included in the agenda for the omnibus meeting at Charahoe.
Yeah, it's your first motion. What's your second?
Well, I got to wait for a second, because people may agree on all the items.
That's fine. I, I, I'll second it.
Well, thank you.
Motion for second. Discussion.
I think that.
All in favor?
Burns, I.
I want to abstain.
Chris, I.
David, I.
Motion passes. Okay, so your first thing on the omnibus passes. Go ahead, Scott.
The second one is a, uh, address ways to get the General Assembly to address funding and promoting education better. And basically, uh, what the, the background on that is, because of the state constitution and the state's ability to address educational funding better, because they have a better source stream. They have a more, uh, ability to use various revenue streams. Basically, the cities and towns basically have to rely on property taxes mainly. Uh, the state has the lottery. They have income taxes. They have other, uh, fees and taxes. And, uh, that's what I'm looking for. Plus, you also have the, the constitutional mandate under Article 12, Section 1, that says the General Assembly promote education. So I, I would at least like to have a discussion at the omnibus meeting. You, and you got to remember that the towns belong to Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns. The, the school committee belongs to Rhode Island Association of School Committees. So those groups, if we have a unified effort, maybe we can get some concessions from the state. For what it's worth. So I make that a motion.
But what's the motion?
Okay, I make a motion that we discuss.
I mean, because you said discuss stuff. I mean, if, if you're going to make a motion, I think it needs to be specific to what.
Okay, I know, specifically address that. I make a motion, we have a discussion on getting the General Assembly and and other interested parties to promote funding of public education better in Rhode Island.
Motion, motion's on the floor. Have a second?
A second.
Second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Davis, I.
Burns, I.
Chris, I.
Gary, I. Okay, number two motion passes. Scott, what's your number three?
Okay, uh, the Charahoe Act requires that the, the Charahoe School District maintain our elementary school buildings, which are technically owned by the towns and, uh, rented for a dollar uh, to the Charahoe School District. And I'd like to have a discussion on how our, our property is maintained, the elementary schools in the Charahoe District. Uh, and, uh, because I don't think, and I know it's, it is no longer owned by this, uh, no longer run by the school district, the old Ashway School. I'd like to know what the condition of the current Ashway School is, the Hope Valley Elementary School, and as well as the Richmond and the Charleston Elementary Schools. The school, the Charahoe Act requires the Charahoe School District to maintain the buildings, even though they're technically owned by the town. So I want that, so I make a motion that the maintenance of the school buildings, both the elementary school and other school buildings in the district, uh, which includes all, all buildings, the high schools, the career and technical thing, all groups, all buildings. So I, I make a motion that the maintenance of school buildings in the, in the Charahoe School District be a, uh, an agenda item at the omnibus meeting. I make that a motion.
A second.
Motion's been second. Discussion.
Just so I'm clear, so you, you, you want a discussion on the, the condition or present condition?
The present condition, the present condition, the maintenance, and how, according to the Charahoe Act, if you follow it, says.
No, I understand all that.
Okay.
I understand.
It's basically, because one of the things, uh, they will complain about in, in funding is.
Hold on, Scott, let me wrap this up. Okay, so it's a motion second. All in favor?
Davis, I.
It's all facility.
Yeah, all buildings.
You're talking group to foundation. You talk.
No, you're just making a general thing about, because you're dealing with several buildings. You're dealing with, uh, four elementary schools. You're dealing with.
Yeah, I got that. Right, but you're trying to understand what you're.
The maintenance.
He's basically looking for, he's basically looking for.
A discussion on the maintenance of buildings.
Report or what are you?
No, it's not a maintenance report. It's just a discussion on, because I think one of the things that taxpayers are concerned.
Scott, 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 Scott. Let's stay on.
No, no. But I was going to address the reason why we're talking about buildings, because buildings is, a lot of times people will come up and say, we need certain things, but certain buildings, and people are surprised by it. And I think people want to know.
I don't think the school committee is surprised by it. I mean, I, they've got a pretty substantial list of a lot of things that need to be done, right? Because I, because I listen to every single school committee.
I'm trying to be a practical leader in this community.
Scott, I understand that, but you haven't bring ideas and specifics. I mean, we, I just want to throw generalities out there. I mean, because that's just so open-ended.
Yes, we just don't want to throw stuff at the wall.
Like, you know, Council Burns is saying here, are you talking about the landscaping? Are you talking about the mechanicals of the building? Are you talking about?
Like, I'm with you on this, but I wanted to understand.
Well, it's the building, the buildings. We have numerous school buildings that the school district has been taking care of, including the elementary schools, which technically the towns own, and they rent it to the district for like a dollar. And, uh.
One of the things is that when, um, Hopkinton is no longer going to be doing snow removal of the parking lot.
Right. And that was a discussion at the last time, Council.
And so it's, it's your right to, to get this clarified.
Right, no, I, I, I agree.
I'm, I'm trying to be a responsible leader. I know people think I'm a nut maybe, but maybe I am.
Listen, I, I mean, if I'm going to sign on to something, I want to know what I'm signing on for, Scott. I mean, that's.
What I was asking.
Yeah, but all I, you know, the thing is, it's like Joan Rivers used to have a line, can we talk?
Scott, Scott, Scott.
I mean, I don't want to have to read the fine print, you know? I'm going to get a read of funny.
It's, it is about the maintenance. And that's it.
It's about just.
There you go.
Would you like to see a maintenance report?
The current state of maintenance.
Okay, all right. I can get on board with that.
So. We had a motion for a second, and we left with you.
Burns, I.
Moth, I.
Chris, I.
Gary, I.
And I'd like to thank the town council for indulging me on these three issues. Thank you.
We had to go around the block a little bit, but we got where we're going. All right, thank you.
That's normal.
All right, public comment.
You feel better, you work.
Joe Moreau.
This is, uh, Scott, you have a question.
We be standing out there for a while? Briefly, Joe, if you could.
I will. After that, I want to thank the, uh, town council members for appointing me to the, uh, charter commission. I look forward to working with Linda Diario, uh, Ian Anderson, Tom Buck, Tricia Fonce, William Felkner, and this guy, Joe Moreau. Um, I also want to thank the four council members that voted not to advertise Rhode Island Solicitors', uh, position. I will have a discussion with someone else at another point.
I know it's May, but go for it.
Communications meeting, I attended every one of them. They're not trying to, there's three people on there, between Etta and Sue and Cecil. I believe it's Cecil.
And Sarah.
Um, they're not trying to overstep any bounds. They're not trying to change anything. They're just trying to improve the town. If you, uh, that's one thing. If you go to our, I spoke to Jeff about this, and there might be some issues with YouTube. Counselor Davis is correct. Under upcoming meetings, there's nothing there. You have to find it, and I found that up on the top, where it says meetings and agendas, and you click on it, you'll find the meeting. When you drop down to the bottom to look at the video, first thing that comes up is in 2021, Kamoli Solar Project, and it shows a picture of that. So I fooled around with it for about five minutes, and I figured out when you slide over to live, you'll see these meetings. So the current system that we have now, if we have to wait till April and residents have to go through that, my God.
So we'll fix, he's fixing it right now.
We're in it right now.
I've talked about this two weeks ago, three weeks ago, a month ago. Yeah. There's incorrect numbers to contact the Director of Public Welfare.
Yeah, I remember that.
It's called Director of Public Welfare. In one area, it's called Welfare Director. There's so many inconsistencies. Talk about moving forward. You know, I get frustrated, as you can tell, sitting here, and, and I don't want to look forward. Typically, I'm the only one here or a couple of others. I don't want to look forward to these meetings and be a political debate all the time. That's not what this is about. There's so many things that we, we need to move forward with. Um, did you know we have a town treasurer in our town? Anyone know that we have a town treasurer?
It falls under finance, right?
Yeah. But if you look at the town charter, it says town treasurer. So Marita was kind enough when I questioned that, because I've read the charter twice now. It's our finance director. It talks about a highway supervisor. Yeah, it's Director of Public Works in the, you know?
So there's some of the things you.
Absolutely. One of the key points is, and, and I confirm this with Al, at, before the fiscal year ends, the town planner, I'm sorry, the planning board is supposed to report to the town council on what they've accomplished for that year. Al can't remember the last time that happened.
It's a lot of things.
He, he can't remember that. He talked about changing the town ordinance. In that town charter, it says every two years, planning board is supposed to review those, the town ordinance and report to the town council. That doesn't happen. That's where we need to go to improve the town. Scott, I agree to disagree with you. I don't want to hear any more about the, the school committees. And anyway, I'm going to leave it at that. We'll chat some other time. That's really all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Quickly, please.
It is very quickly. Uh, your communications commission, the beta testing, in the big people world, it's for functionality only, not content. So I would expect that you would follow that path. Okay. And then the other comment that I wanted to make was, I was a little bummed out to find out that the town hired a photographer for the website. Think there's a better way to spend that money, and there are a bolt load of long-term residents who also participate in a website called Town Hope Valley Past and Present. And, uh, you get the best picture of our community for free. I think reaching out to the community rather than hiring somebody to do something like that would have been a better idea.
That's also, I mean, not what do you call it, but that's also entree quarterback too in the side, you know, and that, I mean, we're going to have some nice pictures, current pictures, not of whatever. I mean, it would have been nice maybe to know down the road. I don't know about reaching out. I mean, I think new website, whatever, I'm going to agree that I, I think the town council did the right decision.
Okay, so I think one of the hardest jobs you guys have as a council is engaging everybody who's here tonight. That's my point. And when you don't do little things like that, that mean a lot to people who really can't contribute to boards and commissions. If they can contribute that way, you would get some mileage and some attention. So from a marketing perspective, that's some of the approach. You can't just look at it from all the great pictures this professional is going to take. You guys need to engage the community. You needed to do it two years ago.
Okay, not to start it, but.
There's, I, listen, I'll, I'll be.
Excuse me, Mike. Thank you.
First, when we first, well, the five of us first got together, except for Bobby, he's new this year. Don't forget, we were in neck deep in COVID. Okay, so I think I even said this in some of my, some of the things with the Wesley Sun interview, that COVID pretty much shut us down. We did not come back. We got sworn in, and we walked right back out the door after that. We were all on Zoom right up till about March of this year. So there was a big gap in time where, like, nobody would really come in. I think myself or Scott would come in, or I started staying home. So you really, you know, COVID really knocked it for those two years.
Planning board experienced the same thing.
Yeah.
So I'm up to speed on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand you need to make your decisions. I just think from a community perspective, it's like the solicitor thing. If you invite people in, you're engaging them, and you get some leverage and you get some credibility.
Thank you. All right.
Good evening, everyone. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
I see very many smiling faces up there. Two small items. First, Council Davis brought up about the, uh, discount for senior citizens on our taxes. Basically, in Rhode Island, if both parties, husband and wife, living in a house, are on social security, you make too much money to qualify.
Right.
That should be addressed at some point, just, just food for thought. It's kind of something, oh, we got this, but no, we don't. Go away, go home. Second item, Counselor Hurst brought up about the schools. I was and currently the chairman of the 1904 Committee out there and down the building. The school committee sent a representative to our meetings. It, first and second meeting, I asked, I said, when Charahoe took over the 1904 building as a functioning, functioning school, full of teachers, full of students, full of all the resources, all the materials that the school needs, it was handed to them. When they left, there was one damaged teacher's desk, nothing else. Where did it go? And there was an uproar. You can't accuse us of stealing. This is the way that came to me. That could be a suit for libel. Just ask the question. We had it. You borrowed it. It's gone. Where'd it go? Well, that's where we stand on that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, you too.
If you wanted to turn, someone, hold on a second. Before, before Scott says that, I'd like to, uh, wish everybody a Merry, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We have this coming up. We're getting ready to return. Definitely want to reach out to the town staff, town staff and all the town employees. I wish them the best for the holiday season.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn in honor of Marita Murray, our new town clerk. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn in honor of Marita Murray, our new town clerk.
Second.
Motion on the floor, a second?
Burns, aye.
Davis, aye.
Moffett, aye.